Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Governance and Transparency Committee Meeting Number Seven of 2023 on the 10th of August. Check councillors' attendance. We have all committee members present except for our chair, councillor Jacob Madsen, who has sent an apology. So with regards to that... Councillor Madsen has requested a leave of absence from the Governance and Transparency Committee Meeting of 10th of August 2023. I'll move that a leave of absence be granted for councillor Jacob Madsen from the Governance and Transparency Committee Meeting of 10th of August. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. All those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda today, councillors? No? Business outstanding? I have nil. Move on to confirmation of minutes. The confirmation of the minutes of the Governance and Transparency Committee Meeting Number Six of 2023 on the 13th of July. Does any member of committee wish to discuss anything from the minutes? No. I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, Mayor Harding. Seconda? Call for a seconda. Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any discussion on that? No. Then I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Moving on to officers' reports. Item two is Flood Recovery Resilient Homes Fund: Voluntary Home Buyback Proposed Property Acquisition. Committee, this is a report concerning the proposed acquisition of various residential properties by Ipswich City Council for the purposes of the voluntary home buyback programme. This initiative gets its funding from the jointly funded Commonwealth and Queensland Governments Resilient Homes Fund under the Disaster Recovery Funding Arrangements. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? Then I'll... The recommendation is in three parts, as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. A seconda? Thank you, Mayor Harding. I'll open the matter for discussion.
If I may, Chair, just again, what do you think the federal and state governments for the voluntary home buyback scheme? It's been a lifeline for so many and in this, I guess the confidential chatter shows, four more families who will have, you know, some hope back and they'll be able to move on with their lives and move somewhere where they won't ever be flooded again. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item three is acquisition of part of land at 59 Huxham Street Race View for Deving Creek Bike Way Stage Two. Committee, this is a report concerning the acquisition of part of 59 Huxham Street Race View to facilitate the implementation of Stage Two of the Deving Creek Bike Way corridor, which forms part of the Department of Transport and Main Roads' Principal Cycle Network Plan and council's IGO Active Transport Active Action Plan. Any member of committee wish to ask any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask some questions about the community consultation and the consultation process with landowners and tenants.
Yeah, so you have the appropriate office coming forward.
Good morning. Graham Martin, Manager, Capital Programme Delivery.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. I know in the report that in September 2020, council contacted the landowner and leaseholder, and I think there were some conversations in 2021. What's our process for consultation with landowners and tenants?
Yes, that's a lengthy process. So if we go back a couple of steps, if we talk about the consultation with the landowner, the alignment of the Deving Creek Bike Way, which this is Stage Two, but Stages Two, Three, Four and Five, the alignment was all approved through the Growth and Infrastructure Committee of Council in April 2019. So in terms of being out in the public domain, that's been out there for quite some time. In terms of having consultation, we're going through the stage now, obviously we're going through the design phase at the moment. We don't have a detailed design. We know where the alignment's going to be, so we didn't feel there was a need to continually communicate with the landowner about the same alignment, because that was, let's say that's locked in, we're not looking to relitigate the alignment at this stage. Working through the design at this stage, it's a detailed design but not a final design, knowing that there's going to be some property acquisitions involved in this process. The steps we take is to make sure before we hand it over to the property team, they have some detailed design in their hands. Quite obviously, it's emotional for most landholders to lose some of their land.
Oh, yes.
So we want the property team to be able to go in there with a high level of detail about what we expect the size of the land to be. Some other times, we've gone in there with less information and the landholders, you know, really want to know, because it's their land, is it going to be 10.4 or 10.3 metres that you're taking? What's your point of ingress and egress? Are you going to knock down trees? Are you going to replace like for like? So if we don't go in with a high level of design detail, then the property team are left with questions that no one can answer. So in this case, we've progressed quite some way with the detailed design deliberately. We're now in that phase where it's a detailed design, not a final design, to go and talk to the landowner and start negotiating the finer detail, what works, what doesn't work. And also, so this is the appropriate time to engage in real meaningful dialogue. And I guess the other overlay to that and why we're talking about it being appropriate now is while we've got money for designing the project, there's no money in the budget at this stage for construction. So we've got at least a three-year horizon before we'd be looking to doing any construction. Excuse me. It's somewhere in the order of an $8 million project. It's not something that will just suddenly land on our desk and be ready to go overnight. So again, we've got some comfort on our side and probably some of... The landholder may not feel that same level of comfort, but we don't feel like we're going to be walking in there, taking land and be building within a matter of weeks, months.
I note this, that April 2019, council made that decision, and our report says in September 2020, council contacted the landowner. What was the outcome of that discussion with the landowner?
I don't know the discussion, the outcome. My assumption is that that discussion was some of the conversations about getting access to do survey, some of the access about progressing and getting some details. So I don't know that there was an outcome per se.
Was it a positive or negative? Was the landowner okay with it or not?
Well, the landowner is concerned about the impacts they're going to have on his business. So is it positive or negative? I don't know if it's positive or negative that a person is concerned about their land. It is what it is. They are looking at it from a different side of the fence to what we are. So I don't see that as positive or negative. I just see that as a natural interaction that we need to have when we're looking at engaging with private landholders.
Okay. So you're saying now, I guess, when were the designs completed?
Recently, as in June or July. Yep.
Okay. I note that the recommendations are basically saying we're going to go straight into acquiring the land. It's not about we're going to stop and now consult with the landowner. Is that normal?
Probably that's in the wording. My understanding is, from the property side, is that it needs to get approval from council to enter into any sort of negotiations. So that is the intent to walk in there with the demand to take the land? No, it's not. The intent is to go in there and start the negotiations and finalise our design. So that's a wording and made a bit of wordsmithing rather than certainly not the intent. And we're not ready from a design point of view to say we're locked and loaded, ready to go. We're expecting some negotiation.
Okay. And when you say the project's $8 million, is that just for this stage or the entire?
No, just for this stage.
Just for Stage Two? Just for this stage? It's $8 million. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Councillors, the recommendation is in two parts, A and B, as per the agenda. I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Seconda? Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open the matter for discussion.
Chair, I'll support this, knowing that this is actually coming through a council decision in two weeks' time. I guess I'll make my own arrangements to contact the business owner. But I just really want to make sure that consultation is occurring.
Yeah.
Because I would like the bike way to be extended and linked up.
Yes, absolutely. It's just the detail, yes. And I appreciate if you kept us all informed of those discussions you had. Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? No? In that case, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item four is acquisition of extinguished drainage easement over Lot 26 on, located at 18 Rodney Street, Silkstone. This is a report concerning the acquisition of an easement for drainage purposes, located at 18 Rodney Street, Silkstone. Council were previously granted an easement over the land. However, the compulsory acquisition by the Queensland Government Department of Education resulted in the easement being extinguished from the land title. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No. The recommendation is in two parts, A and B, as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Seconda? Thank you, Mayor Harding. I'll open the matter for discussion. No discussion? I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item five is procurement matter. Everi, if I've pronounced that correctly, CEO? Everi? Yeah, Every? Event Content Platform. This is a report seeking council resolution to allow a direct approach to Every Proprietary Limited as a specialist provider for the supply to council of a software, as a service solution allowing council to provide a single source repository for event content and booking services at an approximate total cost of $82,000 excluding GST over three years. Market analysis has led to this recommendation as there are no other consolidated event content and booking solutions being used by Australian councils that compare to the Every platform. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No. Committee, the recommendations are in two parts, A and B, as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding. A seconda? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open the matter for discussion. No discussion? I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item six is quarterly report to the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning. This is a report concerning a request from the Director General, Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, for council to provide a series of quarterly performance reports. This report represents the April to June 2023 quarter and is reflective of the scope requested by the Director General in June 2022. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No. The recommendation is that the committee endorse the draft letter to the Director General containing the quarterly update for April to June as set out in attachment one. Mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Seconda? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
Chair, just appreciate the opportunity to provide the Director General of the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning with the quarterly updates on our council. That's a very good governance mechanism for us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item seven is the Quarter Four Annual Plan 2022 to 2023 Quarterly Performance. Committee, this is a report concerning an assessment of council's progress towards implementation of the 2022 to 2023 annual plan with notable achievements that have occurred during Quarter Four, that is April to June. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? Mayor Harding.
Chair, there's a number of questions I'd like to ask. It's the last report for the end of the financial year, so I just wouldn't mind highlighting a couple of things. And I'll do that in discussion as well. But I do have a couple of questions. I just want to ask a question about page 110 on the deliverable status. I don't know, CEO, if you're the correct person.
Page 116?
110. Yeah, I'll take that one. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, go ahead, CEO.
So I can see that the deliverable status, we've done it on about 75% of completed or on-track programmes. Just wondering how you're managing those other eight projects?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Thank you, Chair. So as the table indicates, there are 16 on-track and continuing into the next financial year, three that needed attention, two at risk, and three are in the other category, and seven have been completed. So in the commentary on each of the projects, there is commentary that indicates for a couple of those that they're expected to be slightly delayed and expected to be completed in the first quarter of the current, what is now the current financial year, 2324. So, and I can speak to the detail of those, but that's in relation to two of them. In relation to the three that are other, in a couple of cases, they have been deferred. For example, in one case, it's because of the L GIP. So rather than proceeding with one of them, we've got that on pause. So that's an explanation of one in the other category. In terms of the at-risk, they are both continuing. One of them is the Effective Asset Management project, which we can certainly have an officer come up and provide more detail on if required. That project is progressing and is continuing. As you know, that project is a multi-year programme. Some of the deliverables that were in the documentation as planned to be delivered by a particular date and time in the last financial year wasn't met. So hence, it's certainly now, EPMO's project management methodology has flagged as red, and that's what we've reported. As you know, it continues to be a very important, critical project for this council. And there is risk there, given the importance of our effective asset management. So it is receiving significant attention by the responsible project sponsor and what will be our now new general manager of asset and infrastructure services, and myself as well, obviously keeping a very sharp eye on that one, given all of the internal and external audit focus on asset management. That is only going to continue. That's probably the...
What was the second at-risk?
Second one, as I understand it, I've highlighted it. I'll just take a moment and just bring it up.
Might be the development of a cultural landscape investigation.
Yes, it is. Yeah, correct. So that's one that I will make a note to take more of an interest in. The commentary in the report there is that work is progressing, for example, on a cultural heritage management plan for White Rock that's underway. And the consultants that we have engaged, because that is specialist work, have been requested to continue with mapping the scope of the White Rock area, and a draft report on that will be forthcoming. Because of the changes in the Yugura Pool native title applicant representation, we're just working our way through the proper engagement with the traditional owners and with the recognised native title party applicant. Again, the responsible GM can come and provide more detail on that one. But that is, it's not progressing to the planned timelines and hence the at-risk red rating that we will continue is continuing as best we can at this point in time, but we might need to look to take a different approach there if we can.
And my last question is just on the performance targets for Ipswich Waste Services, which is on page 129, I'm not sure what's still for the council offices. But just looking, obviously, great to see some of the areas where we've achieved the acceptable standard but also the target standard as well. But I also see there's a few areas there too that we were below the acceptable standard as well. So in regards to requests for replacement repairs, action within five working days, that has dipped. Just wondering, what was the reason for that and what's been done about it?
Yeah, I could speak to it at a high level, but if you're happy, we can ask David McAllister up. He'd be more than happy to come up and explain. It's certainly receiving attention. I guess just while David, obviously, is receiving attention, it is a concern. And David will be able to speak to what some of the impacts have been and what we're doing about it.
Yep.
Thank you.
I do note, CEO, I guess in the commentary, but the exceptional results in other areas as a growing city, buying more fleet, I just thought that there are a few things there. Thank you.
Indeed.
Thank you, Mayor. David McAllister, Manager, Resource Recovery.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McAllister.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair, on page 129, in particular, the areas of requests for replacement repairs action within five working days, where the acceptable standard's 85% and target's 95%. We can see the last quarter, it's been at 67%, 67% and 64%.
Definitely something we're aware of, definitely something we're focusing on. There's a few nuances in that statistic. It captures all activity and we tend to focus on new and replacement bins first. So those things that are maybe a lid replacement or a wheel replacement tend to fall down in the priority if we're struggling in terms of staff or sick leave. So we tend to make sure priority is those people who don't have a bin or need a full bin. So the stats don't tend to reflect that. The other thing with the statistics, unfortunately, there's a lag between actually doing the job and closing out the statistic. And we're actually working with the contact centre at the moment. The guys can do a job, say, today, and it may not get closed off in our system till four o'clock this afternoon, which means it doesn't get closed off in SASS till tomorrow. So there's a lag in the stats. So we're trying to get a bit closer handle on that. So that's something that the guys are working on right now. So it's definitely very high priority. It sits in the weekly report every week. It's something I'm hammering on the guys about. We have gone through another period of additional sick leave impact on the staff. And as you rightly point out, the growth just continues on at a reasonably challenging rate.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any further questions? I do have one, CEO, on page 113, and it's probably just a typo, under the L GIP. In status for Quarter Two, the icon used is an item for budget status key as opposed to in the deliverable status key. As it's described in the key, being under budget, it's actually in the deliverables column.
You're absolutely accurate. Well spotted. We will correct that. Thank you.
We know what status it should be.
Assume Amber and they've used the wrong icon, but let me just check.
Considering it was on track either side of that quarter, it would be fair to assume it would be on track.
Can I clarify and come back? I'm not sure, to be honest, unless anyone wants to answer from the room, but I'll come back on that. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. No further questions, committee? No? Then the recommendation is that the committee endorse the draft letter, beg my pardon, that the Quarter Four Annual Plan 2022 to 2023 Quality Performance Report be received and noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Doyle. A seconda? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Any further discussion? Mayor Harding?
May I, Chair? In going through this, I think it's important to look at this at the end of the financial year as well. Really heartened to see the developed options for analysis for the Civic Centre is obviously on time and completed. So that'll be, I think, a really interesting piece of work for us to do. Growing, we certainly want to improve the capacity but also the facility that we have for performing arts community. So I think it's really great to see that. On page 115, we've talked about under safe and inclusive, and we looked at some of the locations for the Green Walkable Art Street project. And I know we've got some locations there. I would love to have seen the name of the artist there as well. I think it'd be good for them to have that recognition in that little locations box.
Have the native, sorry, have the local artists.
Yeah, the artists that produce the artwork. It'd be nice for us to have that, you know, they probably...
Absolutely.
Thank you for answering the questions I had, CEO. But I think, very impressed with the performance, but also I think the area that looks after the production of this, I think it's a very good, easy read. It's improved a lot from what it was five years ago. Thank you very much. It's easy to read and look into. So thank you.
Yes, I'd definitely concur. Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Committee, I don't have any notices of motion nor matters arising. Committee, I don't have any notices of motion and nor matters arising. So we will close the meeting at 11:37. The next committee commencing in 10 minutes at 11:47. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.